Santa Barbara Unified School District Board Meeting for September 10th, 2013. We will begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Cash, would you do us honor?
Please stand. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands the foundation and reality of this world, where it takes justice for all.
Buenas tardes. Tenemos interpretación al español para el que guste escuchar la reunión en español.
Thank you. We also have headsets for the hearing impaired available if anybody is in need of that as well. Introductions, proclamations, presentations, and recognitions. Dr. Cash?
We want to start with Jose Espinoza, student from San Marcos High School, is here to deliver the first student report of the 2013-14 school year. Welcome, Jose. We're happy to have you here.
Thank you. Hey, good evening, my name is Jose Espinoza, ASB representative for San Marcos High School. Here I show you, you can play YouTube video of the flash mob. The flash mob, this is class of 2013 through graduation. And here you go.
Bring the action.
You guys understand?
Yay.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Well, since then, there's been a lot of things going on. In the summer, the girls cross-country and track, track, my bad, became academic champions of the state. They won the Academic Champion Award. As well as beautifying San Marcos was finally completed, the project. And it was completed this past summer. The new, some upgraded characteristics of our campus are the walkway behind cafeteria, the parking lot in front of the gym, so as a gym rooftop. And the homecoming, homecoming is one of the things that are coming up soon. Our homecoming game is the 27th of October. And we're having carnival before, before the homecoming game. And then our homecoming dance is October 5th. And yes, that's about it, for San Marcos High School. But this morning, I was notified that we have to present for Dos Publis High School as well as DP High School. And Dos Publis High School sent me an email, and this is what they wanted to say. "We held our first PTCA meeting last Tuesday, September 9th. Things have been going well for DP so far this school year. The new leadership class effectively ran orientation for all Dos Publis students." Yes, and Santa Barbara, I just received this email 10 minutes ago. Club rush is next Friday, the 20th, at lunch for students to shop for clubs. Homecoming is October 5th. Seniors sunrise is September 26th. We feed all the seniors free breakfast and give out free senior shirts. That's for Dos Publis High, I mean, Santa Barbara High School. And, yeah, oh, and Kids Helping Kids, San Marcos Economic Project, AP Econ. They receive a grant for $78,000 from State Farm. And that's one of the new things. Yes, that's, and freshman class. The freshman class this year is the largest freshman class in San Marcos history. It contains about 570 kids, students. Yeah, that's about it. That's all I have to say for updates regarding San Marcos GP and Santa Barbara.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, have a nice weekend.
Thanks. Back to school nights, and our elementary and secondary schools begin tomorrow and continue through September 19th. More than 200 high school students have been recruited, trained, and will soon be deployed throughout the district to provide comprehensive language access to parents and staff. It's a great opportunity for families to connect with their children's schools. And also, our district-level administrators will be fanning out across the district to attend these events. We'll have at least one central office staff person at each of the back-to-school nights. Last week, we were very fortunate to have Lois Capps visit. She came here to see our Special Education Parent Resource Center. She was very impressed with the efforts that have been undertaken. Want to publicly acknowledge Sherry Ray, and Barbara Kiani, and Helen Rodriguez for their great work in putting that together. And it was clear that sharing that information with her, that she's going to take that back with her and help inform her work as a representative for our region. Our priority still remains to secure resources to ensure that we have adequate staffing for that center. And we'll keep you informed once that's in place and we're able to post the hours of the operation for the resource center. One of the other areas that we're looking at, including in that, is an opportunity for technology resources to be made available for parents and staff as well. And Todd Rickman is coming up, I think he's ripping it off from Apple, and that's the idea of a Genius Bar, where students would have the opportunity to earn community service hours by coming and providing onsite support and instruction for staff and parents in using technology. One of the things I wanted to mention publicly is that we encourage members of our public that want to be involved, or consider, would like to consider being involved in our elementary or secondary bond oversight committees, or the elementary and secondary parcel tax oversight committees as well. The committees meet four times a week, and it's about a one-hour meeting. Applications are available at all our schools and on our website, and also at the back of the room this evening, and they're due to Barbara Kiani's office by September 16th. Want to announce that we have secured the date for my State of the Schools address, and it's scheduled for Wednesday, October 23rd, at the Cabrillo Pavilion Arts Center. And I want to remind all of us, I'm sure we don't need reminding, but I think I need to say it publicly, that tomorrow is Patriots' Day. It's a national day of service and remembrance to honor the lives of those that were lost on September 11th. Our flags will be at half-staff, and we anticipate and know that activities will be taking place on most all of our campuses to remember that day. And that, this concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Board, comments or correspondence? All right. Announcement of closed-session action items. We don't have any reportable closed-session action items, but I do want to mention that prior to closed session, Board Member Parker made a motion that was seconded by Dr. Bass to appoint Craig Price and Dave Cash as our conference negotiators under the item of conference with real property negotiations regarding the Tatum property. So, I'll make that note. I don't believe we have any public comments.
What comments or questions? Alman?
I just did board comments and correspondence, and no one had anything, so...
Oh, that was, that was...
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, no, no public comments.
Okay. But does the board have any additional comments or correspondence they'd like to?
No.
Okay, all right. So we will move on to consent agenda items. Board members, are there any items you'd like to pull from consent?
All consent?
All, yeah.
I'd like to pull F1.
All right. Anything else? All right.
I'll move to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four zero with one absent. So, we will take then the item F1, if that's okay? So, do we have...
I will abstain.
All right, thank you.
All right, and so, this is the approval of Resolution Number 2013/14-17 regarding absence pay for Board Member Idelson, so obviously you're going to be abstaining from that vote, and I'll go ahead and move to approve the resolution.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and we noted one abstention, so the motion passes three ayes, one abstention, one absent. There we go. So this leads us to our action agenda item. So first, we have noted, it's time certain, so maybe we will, wait, wait. Maybe we can take approval of memorandum of understanding with Casa de la Raza and Santa Barbara Unified School District. That's listed as action agenda item number three, and we're only waiting because we have a time certain public hearing at seven.
Thank you very much, President Lamone. This is an item before you, which is the third memorandum of understanding between the district and another agency in our community. And it is part of our expansion of services for students in our Alta Vista programs, the Quetzal program. We're excited about it, and I think it represents a great opportunity for us to not only partner with La Casa de la Raza, but also to learn from them as well. So, it's before you for approval.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Board, are there any questions or comments? If there are no questions or comments, I welcome a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve, to approve the memorandum of understanding between Santa Barbara Unified School District and La Casa de la Raza.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four zero with one absent. All right, we will move to the approval agreement by and between American Contractors Indemnity Company and Santa Barbara Unified School District and contract award to McGilvery Construction, Inc., etc.
Yeah, I'll ask David Hetjung, because he's coming forward. We put this on a kind of a fast track so that we could continue the work that needs to be done in putting a restroom, new restroom facility on the campus of Peabody.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Board members, the original contractor on this project was removed for cause. When we first contacted the bonding company about serious concerns about performance, quality, and timing, they advised us that we had to take this step before we could make a claim on the bond. In cooperation with Dr. Cash, we were able to, and Nathan Rogers from Griffin Thornburg, we were able to take that step, have the contractor removed. Basically, less than 10% of the project was completed in 60% of the time, and the amount that was completed is going to require at least two weeks to repair. We've negotiated with the bonding company to ask them to appoint McGilvery as the takeover contractor. They are the contractor that did the Harding restroom this summer, and are currently working on the Adelante restroom. They've been doing excellent jobs so far, and so we were pleased that we were able to secure their services with the bonding company. Basically, the bonding company will pay the difference between the original bid that was given to the contractor that was removed and the amount of money that will take to finish the project. So, the out-of-pocket expenses for the district are basically attorney's fees and inspector time, extra architect time, and of course, our project management time. But the good news is that we'll be able to get this restroom back on track very quickly and completed, and I'm sure that we're as frustrated as the Peabody community at the fact that we had to take these steps and delay the project.
Thank you. Board, questions or comments? Ms. Parker?
I appreciate your comment about the Peabody community, because I know how hard this has been on them, and how disappointed they are and frustrated. And we often talk here about, you know, the bidding process versus doing a lease lease back, and this is just a classic example of the bidding process going wrong. Unfortunately, it doesn't happen very often, and I can't think when it last happened quite to this extent. But can you tell us what's going to be the difference in time in terms of the completion of the restroom? How much longer will it take than what was originally expected?
It will probably take, I believe the original contract was about five and a half months, and it will probably take five and a half months. The contractor has now 10 working days to get his bonds and insurance into us. Then we give him a notice to proceed. It's going to take him a little bit of time to mobilize, reset the fencing. But this project also includes ADA access at that site, a new ramp, so the parents and the staff and the community can access the school from that side via an accessible entrance, and plus the modifications to some other accessible sidewalks that DSA required on that project. So, time-wise on the contract, it's kind of like starting over. The good news is, the contractor has been on time or ahead of schedule with excellent quality on everything that they've done at other sites, so we would hope this would move forward the same.
So, this project is supposed to have been about three months or so into, you know, being completed, so it's essentially sort of a three-month, about roughly three-month delay?
Well, they've been, there, there's been no activity on the site for probably a month and a half to two months, and so that time was lost also. So I would say we're probably looking at, I don't know the dates, I didn't bring them with me, but we're probably looking at six months from today, because it'll take the contractor time to get his paperwork in and get mobilized.
Okay.
I wish there was, I wish there was a better solution, but I think in light of all that's happened, we have somebody on site that will perform, and the Peabody community can watch progress going forward instead of work being slow and at a standstill.
Yeah, thank you.
Dr. Bass?
I think it'd be helpful for me, as a newer board member, to, maybe in a future date and time, to have a little bit of a small presentation on what are the steps that we take on the school district side to prevent such an occurrence in the future if we go out to bid again, and we run into the same problem. So what are the, what are the steps that we usually take to make sure we don't run into that? I don't know, so I'm only asking that question because I don't know. And so, that would be helpful for me in the future.
We can certainly provide that.
Thank you.
Any additional comments or questions? All right.
I'll move to approve the agreement by and between American Contractors Indemnity Company and Santa Barbara Unified School District and contract award to McGilvery Construction, Inc. in the amount of $719,000 plus 10% contingency. I'll second it.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and we can probably take board action on student discipline at this time?
In case number 12/13-06, I move to approve, and I'm looking on the, I'm looking on the disciplinary schedule, and it doesn't say that this was a stipulated agreement, but it was a stipulated agreement for a full expulsion. I'll second it.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four zero.
And in case 12/13-28, I'll move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel for a suspended expulsion. I'll second it.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four zero.
Can you go right to the one of the conference items?
All right. Discussion of final, the little one? The discussion of final financing?
Yeah, well, we were going to save that, because it's such a happy news for the end, but we can certainly have it now.
All right. So, we are going to skip to conference agenda item number three, which is discussion of final financing summary for secondary and elementary school district bonds. And I just want to remind folks, we're doing this because we do have a time certain public hearing at seven. Ms. Chate?
Thank you. Yeah, very exciting. $55 million were sold on the 5th, actually, the 4th, and the money came in on the 5th. So, per ed code, we're obligated to provide you with a settlement summary. So, I'm looking at the high school right now, but whatever I say to the high school also applies to the, to the elementary school. So for time purposes, I'll just go through the high school, and then we could take it from there. So, the par amount of the bonds was for 35 million. The net original issue, the premium, was 1.6 million. This is about 5% of the loan, of the bond amount, the par amount, which is far below the guidelines that we are allowed to have, so I just want to mention that. And that goes back into the debt fund, net of the underwriter fee. The underwriters' discounts are the 187,000, and so the net amount of that is 4.4, 1.4, which you see down here below in just a minute. Then we go to the disbursement of funds, and so to the Santa Barbara County, 34.8 million went into our cash fund for the bonds, for the building fund. And then the debt service fund was deposited, the net underwriter, net the underwriter fees and the premiums was 1.4 million. So that goes back into the debt fund to offset the debt, so which is good. So therefore, we also have the cost of issuance fund, which was 196,000, and that's all the other players in there. The financial advisor, the cost of wiring, all of the soft costs of doing the bonds. And so therefore, obviously, there's $36 million total in here. So we had a very successful sale, and we're finished with the 2010 issuance of bonds. And everything else applies to the elementary, just like the high school.
Thank you, Ms. Chate. Board, any questions or comments? Ms. Parker?
Well, my comment is, that's great news. So, thank you, and I'm glad that that went so well.
Great. All right. Well, thank you, Ms. Chate. I think...
Seven o'clock.
This is right?
Do you have a drink of water?
Any questions, anyone has, from Ms. Chate on this last item? All right, so I'm going to go ahead and close the general session meeting of September 10th, and then open up the public hearing. Do we have any public comment for the public hearing on approval, G1 approval and Resolution 13/14-15 regarding sufficiency of instructional materials for year-round schools?
There is no public comment.
All right, hearing no public comment, I will close the public hearing and reopen the general session. So, public hearing, so, board, any comments or questions regarding this item?
No, I mean, it looks so straightforward, we, for the, for the year-round elementary schools, this was just looking at the year-round because of the timing at this point, so this will be coming back to us for the other schools at what point?
Couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks. So, look at the timing again.
Again.
But no, that looks totally straightforward, and I'm glad to see that our, our year-round schools have the materials that they need. And I will move to approve Resolution 13/14-15 regarding the sufficiency of instructional materials for year-round schools.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four zero. All right, we are continuing on to action agenda item number two, which is approval of the 2012/13 fiscal year unaudited actuals. Ms. Chate?
Thank you, President Lamone. So each year, we're required by ed code and by the superintendent to present our unaudited actuals in a clear and precise way. So that's what we have done for you. We have summarized this in, man, four pages. So it's all good news, and we're really proud of that, and I just want to give a shout-out to our fiscal department for doing such a great job. But not only that, the sites and the district office all pitching in and making this such a great year, and it really shows in our, in our actuals, unaudited actuals. So let's begin with our unaudited actuals on the unrestricted side of the budget, because that's what we really, that's our operating budget. So, I'm comparing our estimated actuals to our unaudited actuals. So our revenue limit sources, we projected to be 90.7 million, and we got 91.9 million. And this is due mostly to $978,000 that we got in deferred revenue from the state from So they're starting to trickle in, these deferred incomes, so we're really, we're really happy about that, and that was not expected, almost a million dollars. We also had some net effect in taxes. We, each year, there are a reduction in our taxes from prior year, so they're adjusting our taxes. So there was about a half a million dollars this, this year, or last year, so we just budgeted the same amount for this year, because we never know, 1213. So they came in about a half a million short, less than what we anticipated, and then we got more in supplemental.
If I may, can you just clarify what you mean exactly by taxes?
Property taxes.
Property taxes, thank you.
Thank you. We also had a small increase in the federal revenue, and this is basically from our Forest Reserve. These are the kids that live on the Forest Reserve up in the hills. Also, we had a, I don't know exactly where the Federal Reserves are, but the children live on them. So the increases are due to the mandated cost reimbursement exceeding, and that was about $53,000. Local revenue, we had an increase of about 603,000. And this calculation is based on, most of it in here, besides other miscellaneous stuff. Our main amount is our charter schools. We, at the end of the year, we charge them for facilities, and we get a percentage of their revenue for administrative costs. We also charge them back as part of the encroachment on special ed, but we always put it in the unrestricted side because of the encroachment is from the unrestricted side, so we reimburse that side. So, we had, that was the main reason for the increase on that. So moving on to expenditures on the unrestricted side, and salaries and benefits, the difference here is about a half a million dollars, and it was basically two things. We overestimated our 2%, that was going to cost us a 2% off-schedule bonus. And also, we anticipate, it's the net effect of anticipating 100% of the people, the certificated staff coming back for their professional development days, and we got about 80%. So it's the net effect of that. We also...
If you recall, those days were voluntary, staff was not required, but if they did, they'd be paid their, their daily rate, so...
So we anticipate...
We, we were conservative. We budgeted that everyone was going to go. We're ultimately very happy that 80% did come, because that was fantastic to have that much participation.
So then, on books and supplies, as we always do, we always budget that we will spend every dime that we allocate out to the sites or that we allocate to the district office. And that did not come as we knew it wouldn't, and that would be about $300,000. Also, service and operating, the decrease is due to several categories that were not fully expended in reclassification of equipment lease as a capital lease. This was, we were asked to do this by our auditors, and it's like a three-part entry. It hits operating, capital, and it also hits other, other sources, and you'll see that in the narrative. So what is, we also have a few things in our other financing sources, you'll scroll up. We had that child development, you know, that the child development was running a deficit about three years, four years ago, and they have owed us money for the past years, and so they finally made, they made their second payment of $100,000. They did really well this year, and they were able to do that. So we have not budgeted that for next year, and we, what we do is, we usually just kind of wait and see how they do. We don't want to put the pressure on them to come up with $100,000. Transfers out, that's the, there's not much difference there. That's the $4 million that we transferred out to the savings account, or the Fund 17, which is a special reserve account. Other sources, 263,000. Boy, I didn't write a note on that. Conrad, do you remember what that was?
When you reclassify the leases from operating to capital leases, you record it as a source, as the, as the copy machines, we record it as lease, you know, received. So it becomes another source, which we didn't have before, so that's why it showed up there. It's all the capital lease reclasses.
Thanks. So, as you can see, our net operating increase is 4.5 million dollars. So, as you can see, our net operating increase is $4.5 million this year. So we're a very, we're really pleased about that. However, there's a, there's a slight downside to this also. So we, in our ending fund balance here, we estimated, our estimated actuals were 7.8 million, and our unaudited actuals actually came out to 11.8 million. And that's, that's really great, I mean, we haven't seen our ending fund balance in our unaudited actuals on the unrestricted side for that, like that for a very long time, plus we're, we have a surplus. However, due to our one-time RDA funds that we had, through our property taxes, we became basic aid. And with basic aid comes what I like to call my, the unfair share, where not only are we deficit at 22%, but we became basic aid, so we had an additional percentage that we have to return to the state of California. So that is about 7.9 million. So that reduces our ending fund balance to 3.9 million, if we had it all going out in 1213. However, that's not how it's going to happen. The state of California can't get that money, because it's, comes through property taxes. So what they've done is, they've reduced our categoricals that we receive, about 12.4 million that have moved on to the LCFF side, they are going to take 7.9 million out of our categoricals. Well, we distribute, that's the site money, that's the money what we give to the sites. So that money has been budgeted to be spent by the sites. So we're going to have to backfill the 7.9 million to make the sites whole, because of the unfair share of the basic aid unfair share. So, it explains...
We're going to make a, we're going to make a concerted effort with our local legislators helping us to rectify that, so.
That would be great, but I'm not going to hold my breath on that.
She can't, no, I, we can't let her count on that happening, so.
So, in the second box down here, you'll see, basically, what's going to happen is in the 1213 adopted budget, it's going to start with an 11.8 million ending fund balance, we're going to subtract the 7.9 out, so we will have a 3.9 ending fund balance. So we meet our 3%, which is good, and now we just move on and hope that this doesn't occur again, or that we get more money as in, as far as the LCFF, so we won't be in basic aid. Once we get to eight years in 2021, we can be basic aid all we want without them taking any of our money.
I have a quick question, and the answer may vary depending on the day this year, but you mentioned categoricals, were they not supposed to disappear this year with LCFF, but now they're taking money from the categorical side, or is, I mean, I've heard LCFF numbers won't come out until the end of the year?
Yeah, but, believe me, they're on this. So we have a list of categoricals, and they say, this is how much you're going to get, it's 12.4 million, and then there's a column, basic aid, and there it is, it sits right there, it's on the CDE website, and it takes it away from the categoricals. So which, what they're doing is, they don't know how this, how to give us the money yet any, either. They haven't figured this out. So they're, they're basically saying, it's business as usual, kind of, but there's an LCFF component to this. So what they're doing is, they're saying, this is what you got, we're going to hold you harmless, so we hope, and, and then they go, we're going to take this money, because we have that money, and we're supposed to give it to you, but that's the only way they can take that 7.9 million, they have no other way to do it.
From a category that may be non-existent?
Kind of the best way to look at it is that the state passed legislation, the governor signed it, saying the funding mechanism will be different, but they have not been able to enact the regulations to implement that grand plan. And so they're working as if there was, there has been no change, so that they can continue to allocate funds to schools. So it's, and, you couple that with, there currently is still no director of the finance department for the state of California, who's required to create the regulations to implement LCFF, all seems to indicate that we'll have this ongoing chaos for at least many months. So it's, it's the, the grand plan was passed by the state, but the details that make, that are required for school districts to run their operations are totally unknown.
Okay.
They don't even have the counting codes yet, do they?
Well, they have the Common Core.
Just that, though, right?
That's, that one, and that's on the restricted side.
Right.
I have a question.
Ms. Seidelson? So, should we expect that we'd be basic aid again, or was that just because of the RDA bump?
I have been waiting and waiting and waiting, I thought we would have the property tax estimate, but Conrad talked to the county the other day, and we won't have those till mid-September, which is coming up, but we don't know, but we're, what we heard is 4% elementary, 4.5 in the high school. And in the adopted budget, or in my calculation for LCFF, is, we put in 3%, so we may have some more property taxes coming, but I can't really even say that my LCFF calculation is that great anymore either.
Yeah, I think I've mentioned to a couple of board members that the, the final way in which the state will compute the allocations, they're anticipating not being released or completely revised until June of 2014.
We have the charter component too, which complicates it even more, and nobody can answer any questions about the charter school and how that affects and what we're supposed to be doing with them, so.
It's exciting.
We're flying blind.
You're just scared all to death.
And just to clarify a point on the categorical reductions, it's only the state categoricals that are being reduced, and not the Title I, Title II, Title III, that, it's the Economic Impact Aid and a lot of the other programs, and, that are being reduced by a whole lot.
What's an example of the state ones that are being reduced?
Well, Economic Impact Aid is the big one, right?
School improvement program, gifted and talented, CTE, supplemental counseling, KC, art, music grant, math, reading.
All the flex.
Class size, ninth grade class size, all of that.
12.4 million, down to 4.5. But, we ended the year really well, and we can afford it without touching the $4 million in Fund 17, and I think that's, that's great. I mean, I would rather have the 7.9 in the, in our account, but at least we...
Still a lot of unknowns. I mean, you got to imagine, I always think I'm okay with a little chaos, but, but, you know, Meg has to, we have to have a balanced checkbook every day. And so, this is her, her and all of her, all of her colleagues across the state are dealing with these same issues, not knowing exactly what it's going to look like, and may not know for months.
Do you have support group meetings that you go to?
Yeah, it's called vodka. Another thing that I would like to point out, and I don't think Conrad has this up, but on page 22 of your binder, of your unaudited actuals, I wanted to mention that Fund 09, which is the Santa Barbara Charter School, they are the only ones that are in, that are depend, that is a dependent charter, and they're in our books. And I just want to point out that their ending fund balance is 141,000. They're, they're required to have about a 3% as we are. So, that would be about $62,000. But if you can see at the top of this page, their deficit spending, $93,000 a year, and if they continue at that rate, they're not going to remit, they're not going to keep that 3%. So, we just would like to watch them, and I'm going to try to request multi-year projections, how they're going to end that $93,000 deficit. So, we're going to be, we're going to be watching them closely.
And as board members are aware, their petition for renewal will be before the board relatively soon, and this will be part of our analysis and relationship to our recommendations.
I believe Ms. Parker has a question.
I'm just looking at that, so on the previous page, on page 21, their revenues are to, about 2 million for 1314.
Mm-hmm.
And so their deficit spending, and compared, have they been deficit spending over a number of years?
I think they have, but not to this extent. I mean, their operating deficit is 118, then they get some money in, the 24,000, so, you know, that is quite a deficit spend for them, they're fairly small school. So, I would have to look that up.
Okay, thank you.
So that concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions about any other funds, or, we mainly talked about the unrestricted side of the general fund for 1213, but I'll answer any questions you have about any other funds.
Board, any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Needs to be approved.
We do need to, yes. We do need to approve the unaudited actuals.
I will make the motion to approve the 2012/13 fiscal year unaudited actuals.
Thank you, Dr. Bass.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Seidelson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes for zero. We are now going to go back towards the conference agenda items, and we will start with first reading of selected board policies and administrative regulations in Series 5,000 Students, and Series 6,000 Instruction. I am thinking that the best way to go through this, because there were 67 wonderful policy pages to go through, is that we maybe start with each board policy and see if anybody has anything, otherwise, we can move on. Sorry. All right, starting with Board Policy 5113, chronic, uh, point one, chronic absent intruency. Does anybody have anything, comments or questions there? No, then we will move on to Board Policy 5117, inner district attendance, and I do have a question. So I have five questions, but they're only questions. We list a number of academies, and Academy of Public Policy and Leadership, can someone remind me what that is, because?
That was at Santa Barbara High School, and it essentially, it was not, it was not a full-blown academy, in the same way the Green Academy is really not a full-blown academy, and it is not in place anymore.
Should...
I, I just wonder why we wouldn't remove number two as well as number three, because it is specific to the '09-10 school year, and those kids, I'm trying to think if there's any one, because most of these were, were starting in the sophomore year or the junior year. I think that the only one might be the Engineering Academy, if they even had any students in it. '09-10.
They'd be seniors.
No, they would have graduated, because '09-10...
Oh yeah, 10, they would have graduated, you're right.
They would have graduated, so I just feel like we should possibly get rid of number two as well as number three.
That works. All right. Then we will go on, any other com...
Just a quick question, has Mr. Heron weighed in on these?
He, he has not weighed in on these, but I did connect with him recently about whether he wanted to, and he said we could move.
Okay, I just want to be sure that it doesn't go on the consent next time, so it's on action at least, so that we can, so he can weigh in at that point and make changes if he wants to.
That is a great recommendation, so.
So you want all of these to return on action?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. So then we will go to, no more questions on 5, Board Policy 5117. We will go to Administrative Regulation 5125, Student Records. Any questions or comments for that one? Ms. Parker?
I just, I think there's a typo, and that's on page number 16 overall, on AR 5125, down towards the bottom where it says, changes to student records. So it's page 16. Yeah, there we go. Under, it says, only/or apparent guardian, and just that green or, I'm not sure if that's just a typo that that got added in there, because I don't know what that means, so, I, I just, maybe it's only a apparent guardian?
Only apparent slash guardian.
Yeah, so just remove that or.
Anything else on Administrative Regulation 5125, Student Records? All right, so then we will move on to Administrative Regulation 5141.31, Immunizations. Any questions or comments on that? All right. Then we will move on to BP 5141.33, Head Lice. We have a cap of rights, Ms. Parker, then Ms. Seidelson.
Well, for me, the only thing is really, on, on page 25, I appreciate that they're trying to keep students in for the school day, and, and I, you know, honestly, if they're there in the morning, I don't see it as an emergency, one of the things that changes is that they're not instantly pulled out, you know, you're, you're dragged out of work to go with your kid, you can get them at the end of the day. But, just the wording on the sentence in the middle of page 25, when two or more students in any class have been identified as having a head lice infestation, all students in the class shall be examined. In consultation with the school nurse, the principal may also send information about head lice home. I really think parents need a notification, because it is so, so hard to get rid of and so pervasive once it happens, and so I think that may should be sent, changed to a shall.
Shall.
Ms. Seidelson?
I would second that. I think, you know, it's, when you've had a child with lice, and you, the deal that goes on in the home, and every, every which way, it, you know, it becomes a serious issue, and this seems to really loosen it a lot, with how it's talked about. So I would definitely make that shall, and I would hope that, you know, the student and parents take it seriously, because having been there myself, it's, it's hard. Yeah, okay.
All right. Anything else for BP 5141.33? All right, next, we're going to move on to BP 5144, that's Discipline. I have a question on page 27. Midway down in what I see on my screen as green, it says, at the beginning of every school year, the superintendent or designee shall report to the board regarding disciplinary strategies used in each school, in the immediate, immediately preceding the school year, and their effect on student learning in school. How will this report come to us? Is it something that comes to us in open session, does it just come to us in weekly emails?
Yeah, I, I think it would be a weekly.
Email?
Yeah.
All right. That was my only question for that one. Any other questions on student discipline, or comments, or edits? All right, so then we will move on to AR 5144, Discipline. Ms. Parker?
On this one, one of the things that it's always struck me should be in here, that has not been, is that there is in AR 6142.7, Physical Education and Activity, there's a discipline reference that I'll read, it's just one sentence or two sentences, that refers to discipline, and that is, it's under Physical Activity Daily Recession. Teachers and other school community personnel will not use physical activity, ergo running laps, push-ups, or withhold opportunities for physical activity, ergo recessed physical education, as punishment. And it, it's always struck me that this should be over, referred to in this AR, so that it's all in one place, and you don't have to go to this piece in PE and physical activity when you're thinking about discipline. And so, my suggestion would be, there's these subsections, like, starting on page 31, there's a subsection on detention after school, and there's one on community service. And I would suggest that after the one on community service, but before the notice to parent guardians and students, that we insert... that we insert one that's titled Physical Activity, and then it says, "As per AR 6142.7," and then use that sentence. Teachers and other school community personnel will not use physical activity or withhold physical activity as punishment. And just use the exact sentence from 6142.7.
Okay.
All right, and I have two questions on this one. On page 29, it looks like it's Item Number One, Discussion or Conference. Do you, do we need to spell out in the, that we will provide appropriate interpretation if needed or as needed, since it's related to student discipline? Or should I just assume that that's implied?
Well, we can't, I would say it's, we can't discuss unless we're communicating in the right language, so...
All right, so then I should feel comfortable that that's going to be a given?
Absolutely. Well, I can promise you, we will not speak in English to someone who doesn't understand English.
All right.
Well, we might speak to them, but we'd also speak to them in the language they understand.
All right. And on page number 30, under Number Six, Participation in Restorative Justice Programs. So, since all of our junior highs have restorative approaches programs, is this, do essentially our junior highs now meet, well, and I guess one high school, meet that requirement? Or is this something different than the approaches in the program?
No, this is part of the restorative approaches program.
Okay. So, those are my only questions for that one. All right.
Madam President, would you want that to be reworded as Restorative Approach Program, to make it align with how we're calling it in our school system?
Did we align other board policies to approaches?
We haven't gotten there yet. We've been, we've, we've been waiting for it to, you know, roll out system-wide, but I think it's really appropriate. I actually think it would be a good idea to call it...
Approaches or program.
I think approaches, yeah. Or maybe Justice or Approaches Program, just to make it really clear that that's, you know...
Part of what we're doing.
Restorative justice is sort of the national term, and approaches is the local term.
Are we, are we saying program or approaches?
So, would it, I think what we're saying is Participation in Restorative Justice and Approaches Program?
Or Approaches.
Or Approaches.
Program.
Well, we're trying not to call it a program.
Yeah.
So, we want it to be a process of communication, so... How about just Participation in Restorative Approaches?
I would, I would, I would want that to be the case, because the program could change from here until, you know...
And will that be okay? Because the state's calling, calling it Restorative Justice Programs, right?
Is this ED Code language? Or just CSBA language?
CSBA language.
CSBA, okay, so if it, then we can probably say just Preparation in Restorative Approaches. That works? Do we feel okay? All right. Anything else for AR 5144, Discipline? All right. Then we will move on to A, I'm sorry, BP 5144.1, Suspension and Expulsions Slap Da, Slash Due Process. Any comments, questions or edits there? All right. So, then we move on to AR 5144.1, Suspensions and Expulsions Due Process. Any questions or comments there or edits? I think I have one question. Scroll to my page. Oh. On what looks like page 47 to me, there is a part that says, down at the bottom, it says, "However, possession of an imitation firearm as defined by ED Code 48900 shall not be regarded as an offense requiring a mandatory recommendation for the expulsion and mandatory expulsion." I was reminded in the news, I think in the last week, of an incident with someone with a BB gun that had, I think, full-force responding. So, does a BB gun count in this, and do we...
That's not an imitation firearm, that's an actual weapon.
Okay, all right, there we... Right, that's what happened in the news, I think? I can't remember. I think it was a...
It had a replica.
A rep, or something like that, right?
Yeah, and that would be this right here.
So, oh, it was a replica BB?
No, it wasn't a BB gun, it was a replica.
Oh.
It was a replica gun.
Gun.
Yeah.
Got it. That's what it was. So, that would...
It would not...
So, this...
This would kick in.
This would kick in.
It's not mandatory expulsion, although it could be expulsion.
That's interesting, but it was used...
You need your microphone.
Sorry, oh, microphone.
The reason, the reason that it happened is because he actually pointed at someone, and the individual thought he was actually going to be shot at. And then that's when they called the police. It happened like a half a block away from my work.
Right, so then that actually brings up an interesting, what happens if a student uses one of these, an imitation firearm, to threaten someone?
So, that's the student brandishing the imitation firearm. Nobody knows it's imitation, except for that person. So, everybody else is going to react to it as if it is a real firearm.
So, then a different policy would kick in as far as discipline related to that?
Possession versus brandishing.
Gotcha, got, thank you. Thank you. All right, anything else for AR 5144.1? All right, two more to go. BP 5145.6, Parental Notifications. Any questions, comments or edits? No? All right. And the final one is AR 6173.1, Education for Foster Youth. Any questions, comments or edits? All right. So, I think these can all come back to us as an action item to give Mr. Heron the opportunity to comment, but it doesn't sound like there were very many edits in this. But a lot of changes, a lot of green and red. All right. And our final conference agenda item is a final report by the Citizens Parcel Tax Oversight Committee on Measure H 2008. And we have Marjorie Yavi.
Hi. Hello there. So, Karen Kearns was scheduled to make this presentation. She's the chair of the committee, but something came up and she couldn't make it, so I'm stepping in. Okay, so how do I work the thingy?
Just tell him.
Okay. Okay, so... Forward. So, the, I'm reporting on Measure H. The measure was approved by the voters in November of 2008, and expired this past July. And that was a $23 per parcel, parcel tax. And the purpose was to supplement Grade 7 through 12 programs in the junior high, math, science, technology, music, arts, and theater, and foreign language. And in the high schools, to supplement math, science, technology, foreign language, and to restore the math classes to a 1 to 20 ratio. And the, oops, here we go. So, the committee was formed per the, the bylaws for the measure when it was passed by the voters. And the listing of the members is there. There was eight of us. And over the course of the, of the time that we served on this committee, we actually went out to the high schools and the junior highs. We made site visits, we did walkarounds, we talked with the principals, and they showed us either equipment that was purchased or classes that were happening. And they talked us through and showed us results of the, of the measures funding. So, for this last year, we'll start with this last year, the beginning fund balance was 219,000. And then the revenues and the interest that were generated this last year was a little over a million. And then there was transfers out for general fund and the charter schools, and then the school sites made expenditures of a little over a million. And we got reports that showed by school, all the expenditures, so we, we really went over everything. The staff was really helpful in giving us information that we needed so that we could really look at it line by line, actually. And the ending fund balance this summer was $20,000 left, but that, that amount has been spent or encumbered. So, we're, we're done with those funds. So, this last year, the parcel tax funded teaching positions in the foreign language and arts, in the junior high and high schools, and continued funding music and theater programs in the junior highs, and continued funding the ninth grade math class size reduction. And it also funded non-salary expenditures, continued funding technology that were made by the school sites, and instructional supplies for math and science classes, and also continued funding for the charter schools. So, now we'll talk about the four-year totals for the whole time of the, of the measure. And so, the total of the parcel taxes generated was about almost $4.5 million. And we did have senior exemptions, and the total of the senior exemptions was almost 29 million, uh, 29,000. And the interest that was generated was $8,700. So, we had 4.4, almost 4.5 million dollars. And so, for the four years, the totals of the expenditures were pretty evenly spent on salaries and benefits between math class size reduction, music, arts and theater, and foreign language. And then there was the expenditures of about $500,000 at the school sites for technology and for maths and science instructional supplies. And then there's the total for the charter school and the indirect costs. So, the total expenditures was about 4.4 million. And here's a pie chart that shows you how it was allocate, or how it was, yeah, spent. So, you can see that the salaries was pretty even, and then there's a small portion, about half that, for supplies, technology and instructional supplies. And here, oops, go back. So, here's a, not that far. So, here's the pie chart that shows about the, how the allocations were made on the math, science and technology, the non-salary expenditures, and break, broken down by school with the continuation high schools combined together into one little slice. And the, that's, yeah, that was how everything was played out. That totaled about 500,000, something like that, I think it was. 519? 519. Okay, we also wanted to share with you the senior citizen exemptions over the four years. And you can see that the second year and the fourth year were higher. And I think that might be attributed to some publicity. And I also think, I understood that in the last year, we did send out reminders as a district to the, to the senior citizens as a courtesy. So, that didn't, did make a difference in the number of senior citizens asking for that exemption.
I also note that those are election years, big election years.
Ah, yeah.
I don't know if that has any correlation, but those are the state election years too, so...
Yeah, that probably could be. So, the Measure H committee, we continued to meet through the fall so that we could just wrap up the expenditures that were made over the summer. And some of us are going to stay on, on the new measure, Measure A. And yes, we have Andy, me, myself and Corolla. Karen, it turns out, is not going to be able to, but she's turning in her resignation, and that's unfortunate, because she was the chair, and she was a fabulous chairperson. But we'll, we'll be finding new replacements for, for the retiring committee members. And the Measure H and the new Measure A allows two, two-year terms. So, we have these three that are terming out. They were also fabulous, and they, each of them served four years. Karen Anderson, Doug Martin and Jean Reich were really great, and maybe we can get them back another time. So, those three vacancies, we're still looking for someone to fill them, as far as I know. I don't know, Barbara's not here, but I think we're still looking for community members to fill those positions. So, if anyone out there in TV land wants to volunteer on the committee, it's really, a, a good committee does a good job of overseeing how the funds are spent, and it's not a huge time commitment, but it's a valuable service. So, that's our report.
Thank you. Forward any questions or comments? Ms. Parker?
Just as usual, a huge thank you for, for serving, for, for stepping in at the last minute. And, and I want to say how much I, I appreciate, and I hope the taxpayers appreciate, the site visit piece, that you're not just looking at the, the numbers that the district supplies to you, but that you're actually going out and verifying it on the ground and seeing it in action. So, I really, I think it's great that the Oversight Committee's been doing that.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Idelson?
I second that, and I think it's so valuable. I know when the A and B were passing and people were popooing, saying, "Oh, well, there's an Oversight Committee, but they don't really do anything." I think this is definitely grounds for the fact, yes, they do do something, and it's vital to, you know, oversee that the funds are being spent as they say they're being spent, and, you know, as a asset to the students, and everything's very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Bass?
Likewise, thank you, and thank you for your continued service. That's really great. And for the other members as well, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'll thank you again, and I do have a question. If you go back to the pie chart slide, one of the questions that I get asked regularly, actually, that one, yes. And I, I just want to, I feel like every time this comes up, I should probably clarify. But I'll have you clarify that. There's clearly a difference in the amount that the school gets, and if you divide up even, I think, the staff piece, it's also different. And the numbers, the final numbers look different. Can you please explain why that is? Perhaps because the money is allocated by student, but...
I do think that, I know that the money is allocated by the number of, proportionally, so it's fair and equitable at each school by, by the number of students that attend that particular school.
Yes.
So, I'm also assuming that the technology, the, the piece of non-salary, I'm not sure if that's a choice by the school, if they, if they've already got, used...
It's all allocated by ADA.
By ADA. And I, thank you. Yes, and I want to clarify that, because I know, especially when it's an election year and like it was in 2012, when we went out for the bond, there was some community concern that the numbers looked different between one elementary and another elementary, or one junior high and the other. So, I want to clarify to the public that the reason is it's proportional, it's based on ADA.
It's proportional based on the number of students.
We're not favoring, and this committee's not favoring any particular school, regardless of where folks live. So, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you. And thank you for your service, because not only do you serve on this committee, but you do a whole lot to support our schools.
Oh, thank you. It's my pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, this concludes our agenda items for our September 10th meeting. I can't promise you that we will be this quick on September 24th, but do we have any agenda items that we would like to see come to us in the future? Ms. Parker?
There is absolutely no rush on this, but I do want us to look sometime in the next six months at Board Policy 6163.1, which is on library media centers and library instruction.
All right. Thank you. Anything else, board members, that you'd like to see come to us in the future? It doesn't have to be the next meeting, it can be the next six months. All right, if you do, let me know. And I think we discussed coming events. I do want to remind folks, the Health Fair at Summer Senior High is happening this Saturday.
10 o'clock to...
10...
10 o'clock to 3 o'clock. 10:00 to 3:00.
All right, and I'll be there.
So will Dr. Drotti, Mr. Handel and Dr. Cash.
All right.
I was there last year.
Yeah.
And Day of Caring?
Day of Caring, September 24th?
28.
28, 20. September 28. All right, any other upcoming events? All right, so with that, I will adjourn our September 10th meeting, thank you.
So I don't...